I said, I said, he was like, alright, I, I didn't know what it was. It was so funny, you gotta make sure you get all the poles.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm gonna ask everyone to, uh, find their way to a seat where, again, one of, well, all of you, for our city council meeting tonight, and I think we want to welcome those folks out there too. The, uh, CSEA, we're happy to have you this evening. Let's hear it, everybody, CSEA. I'll tell you something, this city could not be where it is today, for the many women that work hard to bring this city back from almost total disaster here. So, we're very, very happy. Just a couple of things before we begin. As you know, the, at the end of the city council meeting itself, after the final vote, we open up the meeting to the good and welfare. And it's important that if you have something to share with us, then that is the opportunity to be able to share on whatever subject or issue that you think is important that we should share. But we want to hear from you, and that is really the, the time to really let us know what you think is going on. And again, another thing to remind everyone is that we have a three-minute limit on the comments and questions you might have. And finally, what we expect from everyone is the kind of decorum that, uh, that we expect at any government function. And that means decorum meaning respect for one another. We may not agree with one's, with what one says or the other says, but they have a right to be able to talk. They have a right to be able to air their feelings without noises or bullying or what it is. And so, I'm gonna make sure that we try to stick to that kind of decorum. And, uh, and again, finally, I have to say that any time that we have the opportunity to hear from you is a good night for us. It's a good city council meeting. And with that, folks, I will turn our meeting over to our, uh, Mr. Fraser.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the council of the city of Long Beach, held Tuesday, April 4th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. Robert O'Callaghan, Councilmember Diamond.
Here.
Councilmember Mandel. Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice President Alama.
Here.
President Torres.
Here.
Let the burglar indicate the presence of City Manager Jackson Henry and Corporation Council Robert Agostisi. Now just look through the flag.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask the, uh, CSEA President John Moody to lead us tonight in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, a free republic, which stands on my nation, on my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, we have very, uh, very many things going on in Long Beach right now that are on our minds, uh, that we're concerned about. We want to also thank everyone for their cooperation and being able to bring the city to the next level of safety that we believe we need to do, and that is with the reengineering of the beach. Uh, and as you know, we are working on the bulkheads, particularly the areas where there are no bulkheads at all, and, uh, we need to protect our utilities as we learn very, very severely that we must do in case of an, uh, an emergency. And with that, I'll ask our city manager to, uh, give us our vote.
Okay, taking a look at our public works update, uh, this week. Many of the folks, um, making this stuff happen are here with us, and we appreciate that. City's water distribution crew will be installing new water services to mark out the services in the West End. Beach maintenance will continue with renovations of the Maple Firehouse, leveling the beach, um, and other, uh, holes, so other things in preparation for the beach season. Additionally, street maintenance gardening crew will be on Park Avenue, broadway, Maple and Shore Road, cleaning and multi-center malls, while the asphalt masonry crew is out working on, uh, Grand Boulevard and Park Avenue, um, with the World War I monument, along with repairing roads from water sewer service repairs. Sanitation will be on a normal schedule, and contractual roadwork is continually hardened. Avenue and National Creative PSEG are doing utility replacements on ocean views so that the city can proceed with the road resurfaces. As a reminder, please visit the city's website to see what zone is being cleaned, so you can accommodate the cleaning, approved by moving screws off that lot. As you might know, the Army Corps of Engineers project, uh, June project has begun, work down Long Beach decades in the making. The city has worked closely with Senator Kaminsky, Assemblywoman Miller, Legislative Committee, Senator Hume's office to ensure that, um, any inconvenience residents may face this summer will be minimized, while also allowing the project to proceed in the timely manner that matters to put in place to protect the city from future storms. Throughout this process, our administration of the city council has continued to stand up for Long Beach. As a reminder, um, though there will be a couple of areas temporarily cordoned off by specific jetties while work is going on, 100% of our beaches will be open this summer. A work schedule is currently on the city's website. Also, mark your calendars at the Army Corps of Engineers and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. We'll be hosting a public meeting to provide information to Long Beach residents regarding the beach protection project right here in this room on April 20th at 7:30 PM. Here's a flyer. Special thank you to Senator Kaminsky's office for working with us to make this meeting happen. The countdown is on, we're just 18 days, uh, away from the city's carryout bag origins taking effect on Earth Day, April 22nd. Please visit longbeachny.gov/bags for all the details of this environmentally conscious, uh, legislation. Later, uh, this spring, Long Beach will host, uh, the first Pride Weekend, uh, June 9th through 11th. While details for the weekend are still being finalized, in the coming days, we'll be publicizing the website, which will have all of the preliminary info, including, uh, Friday, uh, small private events, including a prayer service and a youth event, uh, Saturday at Boardwalk 5K in the morning and a beach day, and Sunday, uh, which is, I think, the focus of, of the weekend, um, a, a vendor fair, uh, a parade, um, and a concert. Once all of the details are finalized, every household in Long Beach will receive information in the mail, uh, paid for by the, uh, LGBT network, and of course, the city will use all of our communications channels, um, to, uh, to make that word available as well. Earlier this month, through the city of Long Beach, distributed revised employee policy manuals to all of its employees to goal the city to promote a workplace that's free from any kind of discrimination and harassment, while promoting equal treatment, uh, equal employment opportunities. To this end, the manual now includes protection for transgender employees from workplace discrimination as per resolution the city council passed June 21st, 2016. This revision ensures that no discrimination shall be tolerated when it comes to employees' gender, identity, self-image, appearance, or expression. At our last city council meeting, there was a hearing regarding the community development block grant funds, in which it was brought up the fact that President Trump has been planning to eliminate the entire program. Since that meeting, the city council and I submitted a letter to President Trump, strongly urging him to refrain from eliminating the community development block grant program, which would be unprecedented and unconscionable. If the program is eliminated as proposed, the city of Long Beach would lose more than $400,000 in funding that supports critical services for our most vulnerable residents. Long Island ultimately would lose $13 million, spread out among 30 million companies. CDBT funding is distributed to various nonprofits that provide critical public services to activist populations. Some of these programs include job training, senior youth programs, homeless assistance, residential rehabilitation funds, to help local homeowners devastated by Superstorm Sandy, improvements to local parks, playgrounds, and community centers, upgrades to bathrooms, and buses to make them easier accessible, and beautification efforts such as Tree Planet. We've also posted this letter on the city website. City will hold its annual Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April 8th, beginning at 10:00 AM, near our creation field. Visit longbeachny.gov for more details. And finally, the VFW and the city will be hosting an event on Saturday, April 9th at 3:00 PM to commemorate the 100th anniversary of America entering World War I. Ceremony will be held at Veterans Plaza, Grand Boulevard, and West Park Avenue. We hope to see you there.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Schneer. With that, we're going to go right into our meeting. Mr. Fraser?
Under my resolution authorizing an amendment and extension to the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Long Beach and the Long Beach Civil Service Employees Association.
Okay, uh, so, a very quick overview. First, I'd like to thank CSEA President John Moody, um, and his leadership team, as well as Corporation Council Rob Agostisi and Jim LaCaruba, who all together worked on this, um, contract extension collaboratively, um, and just to lay out a little bit of it. The city would like to thank the CSEA for the outstanding work that they do every day. Through in-house projects and important labor concessions, the CSEA has helped replenish the city's reserve funds, uh, allowing tax increases to be kept at a minimum over the last few years. In the aftermath of Superstorm Sandy, we were able to do a significant amount of in-house infrastructure work that generated approximately $5 million in cost savings through federal recovery, refreshments, that covered straight time, overtime, and equipment costs. Through good times and bad, the CSEA has been a true partner and a great asset to both residents and the administration alike. Simply put, it's been a great experience partnering together, and this contract extension is a symbol of that. So, onto the meat and potatoes. On Wednesday, March 29th, CSEA members ratified the proposed, um, two, uh, fiscal year 2018 through '25 union contract by a margin of 175 to 11, a 94% approval and a 90% turnout for the vote, both historic approvals. This agreement, uh, we believe is fair to both taxpayer and the union, as the CSEA received an eight-year contract, including reasonable salary increases every year from 18 to 19, uh, through '24 to '25, along with numerous requested ancillary benefits in return for accepting a 0% raise in place of a 2.5% raise for 2017, '18, providing a cost savings of over $400,000 in the first year alone. Additionally, this contract includes healthcare contributions for new employees and future qualified retirees, representing a cost savings of over $2,500 for family coverage and $1,100 for individual coverage, uh, for each new potential hire. Simply put, we recommend to the city council this contract extension, and thank the hardworking members of the CSEA for doing a terrific job for the city, for partnering with the city in good times and bad, and working collaboratively so that we know we have, we'll have great labor relations for years to come.
It's always a great day when both, uh, the, uh, management, the city, and labor can work together for the benefit of the entire city. With that, I'd like to ask the council, are there any comments on this item, the first item that we have on our agenda?
Sure.
Mr. Ramo?
I would just like to send my appreciation to everyone out here, whether they work inside or outside. We all know that it's the workforce that makes the city shine, um, and you're here every day for us, and you're here every day for the residents here, most, and our visitors. And on a personal note, when I was on strike last two years ago, um, you were there for me, we picked it together, and it always means a lot to me, and you are my brothers and sisters, um, and I, it's, it's an honor to be able, up here, to vote for an eight-year extension with the hard work of your leadership. Um, it's, I'm, I'm excited for it, and I'm excited to vote along with 175 other members that also approve this contract. So, once again, I just want to thank everyone personally here, uh, for everything you do. Uh, you all make the city work, so thank you.
I'd like to ask, are there any comments from the public? Um, is there anyone who would like to share their feelings?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Uh, I just want to take a second to echo some of the things that I've been saying recently. I want to commend the negotiating team of both the city as well as the CSEA. As some of you know, I already, I am a CSEA member myself, um, and for both sides, we're reaching a deal that provides increases for the hardworking city workers who deserve it, as well as provides the protections that our taxpayers need as well. So, I want to commend everybody, and I think it's a great deal, and I look forward to supporting it.
And if there are no comments, any other comments?
No, there isn't.
Okay, very good, very good. And, uh, okay, so we'll go to the public. Do we have comments from the public on this first item? Is there anyone who would like to speak? Uh, John, John, is that it? John, is that it?
Uh, first of all, I'd just like to, uh, James House, 95 East Fulton Street, in this great city. First of all, I'd like to just, uh, thank our city council, and I stand in honor of celebrating this historic, uh, event on today as a 20-plus union member, but also I stand as the chairperson of the Martin Luther King Center, recognizing that today is the day of his assassination. And I'll just take a minute and just read a little information. On April 4th, 1968, an assassin robbed us of one of the greatest prophetic voices of the 20th century. Although many people know that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. died in Memphis, many don't know why and what he was doing there. They don't know that he died in a struggle for the right of public workers to have a union. Throughout his life, King stood up for union rights. His teachings, uh, about the rights of labor can serve us all well in our own trying times, when those rights sometimes are under fresh assault. One of King's phrases that we rarely hear is this, "All labor has dignity." King spoke these words, uh, to a mass meeting of over 10,000 people in Memphis on March 18th, 1968. In the midst of a strike of 1,300 black sanitation workers, some 40% of these workers were so poor that they received welfare benefits even though they worked 60 hours a week. Speaking of both sanitation workers in Memphis and working poor across the country, King said, "You're not reminded, not only Memphis, but you're reminding the nation that it is a crime for poor peo-, for poor people to live in this rich nation and receive starvation wages." But the strike was not just about pay, let it be known everywhere, King declared that along with wages and all of the securities that you are struggling for, you are also struggling for rights to organize and reorganize. The key issues for the Memphis strikers were that their demand that the city of Memphis grant collective bargaining rights and the collective collection of union dues. The very two items that Governor Scott Walker targeted in Wisconsin, like city, like city officials in Memphis, Walker knows that if you can say no to bargaining rights and dues collection, you can kill a union. I'm so happy that Martin Luther King, I celebrate his life today, the man is gone, but his life lives on in me and many others. I'm so happy that I have a president and union officials like my president, who was one of the hardest presidents that I've ever known and ever had an opportunity to work with. As I sat home for four weeks, the sickest that I've ever been in my life, with pneumonia, after leaving the hospital, I thought I had a cold for two weeks. I got a call and many calls from John to just make sure that I was okay. And this is my first day back at work, and I'm just concluded, this is my first day back at work, but I would like to, I'm so happy that the doctor gave me permission to come out today, because I really wanted to be here, a part of this wonderful union historic vote, and so again, I applaud the union executive board and my president, and all of these union members from across Long Beach and even out of town. And, uh, for an eight-year contract, it's not unheard over the country. People are losing contracts, they're losing everything, but this union is so strong, and I appreciate being able to be a union member for over 20 years. So, with that being said, in the celebration of life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King, who died in Memphis fighting for union rights, I'm happy to be here with my president and executives and say, I thank you, city council, for voting on this eight-year, uh, contract, and I appreciate you, and I applaud you, and to all my union brothers and sisters.
I particularly want to thank James for making that extremely important correlation between civil rights and also labor. And, um, at this point in the row, I'm, I'm gonna ask our president of, uh, CSEA.
Thank you, thank you.
Love it, John.
I love him too. Just want to say good evening to the council. I want to personally thank the city manager, Jack Schneer, Jim LaCaruba, Rob Agostisi. All people are part of the, uh, labor negotiations. This is a fair contract. I just want to personally thank you on behalf of my members. And just to ask this council, real simple, there's no better workforce in New York State than the Long Beach CSEA. We are strong, we are united, and we are Long Beach. We are the Long Beach CSEA. I'm proud to be here, I'm asking for this council to support them and reward their work. They're the best workers in the entire New York State, and I'm proud to be your president. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Certainly a pleasure to be able to introduce that you find human being and, uh, that leads such a great group of, of city workers. Are there any other comments from the public right now on this item number one? With that, folks, then what we're gonna do is we're gonna move on to our next item.
Mr. President, seeing there's no, uh, no more comments, I'd like to make a motion to vote on item number one.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We... Okay? This time? Okay? Item number one.
Item number one is a resolution authorizing an amendment and extension to the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Long Beach and the Long Beach Civil Service Employees Association.
Councilmember Diamond?
Yes.
Councilmember Mandel?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Oh, good evening. As Mr. Harsh had already pointed out, I was waiting to give remarks, I just wanted to say that this was a historic day, uh, with respect to Dr. Martin Luther King tragically losing his life on behalf of sanitation workers. And so, I just wanted to say that, uh, for myself, as the daughter of a CSEA worker for over 20 years, my dad, um, it gives me great honor tonight, uh, to join in solidarity with all of the workers, the membership, as well as the leadership to support this great event. And I vote yes.
I stand in solidarity, I vote yes.
Number four. For me, it is, uh, extreme honor to be able to give this vote, and this is one of the votes that I have no question about. My vote is absolutely yes. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a brand-new contract vote. Thanks to everyone. Okay, we're, we're gonna move on with our, our meeting, folks, and again, we thank you all for being here tonight. Wonderful evening, thanks again. Okay, we're, uh, we're gonna go on with our meeting. Okay. Thank you again, everyone. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna continue with our meeting, Mr. Fraser, if we can... Yes, I mean, this...
There's no bathrooms there, is there?
What if they put whole bodies? We put in...
That's why this, we just saw this. This gets me sad, when you just did this.
Two weeks, two weeks.
Come back again in two weeks.
What are you gonna do?
Listen, that's what I'm gonna do. I come up here and I ask for a lunch. These are the items that you have to change all the time. How can I go in this room and cut this off?
Okay, so, thank you again. Mr. Fraser?
Okay, to resume, we're now at item number two, which is a resolution authorizing the city management traction to a contract for the rental portable restroom trails for the Ocean Beach Park. Okay, after the damage caused by Superstorm Sandy, the city rebuilt five AA flying comfort stations, and this summer, the city will supply portable restrooms, uh, including the AA flight money and be provided through public assistance, grant money from the city.
Great. Thank you, Jack, and, uh, do we have any comments for the... On item number two? Okay, do we have any comments from the public on item number two? Okay, with that, we're going to move on to the next item.
Item three is a resolution authorizing the city manager and city controller to transfer funds within the 2016-2017 budget.
All right, every year in order to prepare for the closing of the budget cycle, council resolutions place on the agenda giving the city manager and the city controller authority to transfer unexpended funds within the current fiscal year.
Very good. Any comments, questions from the council on this item number three? How about this item? Any questions, folks, from the audience on the item number three? Regarding our budget. Okay.
All right, on to the voting. Start with item number two. Resolution authorizing the city manager to contract for rental affordable restroom trails for the Ocean Beach Park.
Can you just move the option aside?
I'll introduce that.
Second? Lloyd, Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Maydell. Councilor Moore.
Yes.
First President Arama.
Yes.
First President Torres.
Yes.
And item three is a resolution authorizing the city manager and city controller to transfer funds within the 2016-2017 budget.
Can you just move the option aside? Second?
I will.
Lloyd, Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Maydell.
Yes.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
First President Arama.
Yes.
First President Torres.
Yes.
City manager's multi-personnel reports were filed by the city clerk. We'll make a motion to close the meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I will.
Torres, Councilor Diamond.
Yes.
Councilor Maydell.
Yes.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
First President Arama.
Yes.
First President Torres.
Yes. And that, folks, brings our city council meeting to an end. And now we enter our good and welfare portion of our meeting tonight. And again, just as a reminder, there's a three-minute limit on comments and questions that you might have. There may not be an answer that we can give you tonight, depending on whether or not it's a legal issue that we can't answer, or maybe we don't even, we may not have the information to give you. At this time, so I hope you'll be able to leave us information so we can get back to you. And with that, we will begin our good and welfare with Mr. Ronald McHenry. Ronald McHenry, are you here?
Hi.
Great, great. Welcome. It was good to see you, Mr. McHenry.
I wasn't expecting to be up here so quick, being that I fought last time. Ronald McHenry, a resident of Long Beach. I'm just up here to first just commemorate Dr. Martin Luther King. You know, I know that he did for us. James Hogg came up here and said how he fought for union workers. That's one of the reasons why he died. We also know that he died because he was a revolutionary, leading equal rights to all of us. And about two weeks ago, the North Park community got here with concerns of gentrification, which in the comprehensive plan. And we were hoping to have had a meeting by now because a lot of people have so many concerns, especially with, you know, four gentrification projects already happening in Long Beach. And we know Dr. King would roll over his grave to see the sort of things that have already happened in the history of Long Beach, especially because he came here, right, for the community. And, you know, to talk about taxes and what this project will do to this area and what sort of resolution we could come to about affordability. Again, I think to many of the meetings, about fifteen meetings or more, and, you know, affordability is different. We know everybody defines it differently. But I was told fifty thousand dollars, and I don't know if that's the income or what the situation is. There's too many questions, and I just like clarification. Another thing is, I've been around Long Beach, especially the North Park area. And I know Jack said taxes won't go up because of this plan, but taxes are already so high. So many people are being moved or already leaving their homes in the North Park area. So I don't know what the council could do to make sure that citizens are removed from their homes, especially with a new project like the comprehensive plan. So many concerns to talk about. Why not focus on the infrastructure of the city after Hurricane Sandy? Why not focus on a hospital that the city can afford to pay for? And why focus on such a plan? Why other things I feel are more pertinent to tackle? And with that said, I just feel like, I hope this, it sounds like gentrification, even though a lot of people are saying that this plan doesn't point to it. It sounds like a plan that's bringing people out. And Dr. King would roll over his grave again to a situation that's going to push a man out, be a working man, being that he doesn't have the size per se to live in a town so forward to live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ronald. And those are all things that we are very concerned about, too. We've even discussed having specifically a meeting with the North Park area to discuss these concerns. With that, you know, I think that what we'll do is that we will... Please stay with us towards the end of the meeting so we can talk to you a little bit more about that. Okay? And thank you again, Mr. McHenry. Okay, our next person is Ms. Jackie Odom. Jackie? Welcome, Ms. Odom. It's good to see you. How are you, Ms. Odom?
Good evening, Jackie Odom. I'm sort of like following behind Ronald. And my first question would be, what is the status of the comprehensive plan? We are still awaiting for a follow-up. I was promised at the last council meeting that I would get a date for a follow-up on the comprehensive plan as far as the North Park area is concerned, because there are some areas that's in the comprehensive plan that is not clear, and we feel like that they're not being addressed. Some of our sites are the MLK Center, the churches, which will be Christian-like missionary Baptist church, New Life, and Evangel. So that's a big concern with us. Also, from town, pound, town, pine, housing, and Child Park Homes. Those people are concerned over their living. I know Patty was supposed to set a date with me, so I'm still waiting for that date or follow-up for us to discuss some of these things. I know you want to move on forward, and I know you want to go into zoning. So have you set a date for that meeting for zoning? Are we still working on the comprehensive plan?
We have not finalized the meeting. I know that there have been difficulties for many of us to be able to be here when everyone can be here. We're still working on being able to conclude a date in time for this meeting. But we do plan to have it. We are discussing it very seriously, and it should happen shortly.
Okay, and my next concern is when we had the last inclining weather of rain, and we had that terrible flooding on Town Street. I know we have to take the effects bow there, but it doesn't seem to be effective. To me, this seems to be an emergency and something that needs to be addressed immediately because people are losing cars, and they're always flooded out. And we've been talking about this for years and years and years. And it doesn't seem to be an issue or a concern that needs to be addressed.
Ms. Odom, I know that that's been an issue for probably decades, right? And that's why that we have the Critical Infrastructure Protection Project, a twenty million dollar project slated to go target the center of the city. I'm sure you're quite familiar with the project, and it's one that we're moving as fast as we can in the interim. What's frustrating for all of us, whether it be in North Park or anywhere in the city, is there's no magic button that our Public Works Department can press in order to prevent flooding the interim. I've driven through all of those streets and even not been able to drive through those streets right when there's a heavy rain. We all share that frustration.
Okay, thank you very much. But I just hope we will consider the North Park area and the flooding in that area. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Odom, yes.
Yeah, I just, I'm still, I'm still very, very concerned about the flooding. Obviously, Friday night, I received calls from residents as well about the flooding on East Pine Street. And this is a very serious concern because, once again, people are losing their cars. And we understand that because of the income of individuals, it's not that easy to just say, okay, I'll wait for insurance so that I can go ahead and get a rental and get a car. People rely on this for work and for income. And so this is, this is really, this has to be a priority at this point. We understand that we're waiting for the other plan, the critical plan. We know that that's in place, and we're happy about all of those things. But there has to be something that we have to do now to act to protect all of our residents, whether it be in North Park or in the Canals area, because this is a pressing issue. Thank you.
In fact, I just, I just wanted to respond to one of your other questions. You had asked whether the zoning portion of the plan that started yet... It's my understanding that the zoning portion doesn't start until the comprehensive plan is passed or onto the next portion of it. And as we mentioned at the last meeting, none of that would happen until the meeting with the North Park community took place again, which was something that we discussed as well last time. Yeah, of course, of course. So it has not, it has not, obviously, it hasn't passed yet. And it won't until the resolution is issued.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Odom. Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments from the council on this issue? Okay, our next person is Mr. Brian Bradish. Welcome, Brian. You're still here?
Yes.
Good to see you, Brian. Welcome, Brian.
Good evening, how are you? First of all, I'd like to say, you know, thank you for the CSCE contract, and the hardest work and the group of people that are out here. There's a few things tonight I'd like to start with to go over. You know, I think my wife sent an email to everybody about as far as the bathrooms. There's issues with the bathrooms. We're trying to keep our concession stands open. Here's a picture of the bathrooms. If everyone wants to take a date, we'll show it to them. What time the bathrooms are closed at? The bathrooms have to be open for the concession stand to stay open. We were shut down on Sunday at five o'clock. I was getting open the sunset, which is seven thirty. I don't think it's a crime to have the bathrooms open at the sunset this time of year. Last two weeks ago, we were shut down at three o'clock in the afternoon. I'm not going to pay that, you know, so much to the Board of Health when they come down there and say, hey, you know, you don't have a bathroom open. I'm sure the city wouldn't pay it either. At this point, we would just like it open. There's a lot of people that are coming out after having a long winter and having fever. They want to come up and use the boardwalk after work. And they should be entitled to use the, you know, the bathroom, whether it's on Grant, or Lincoln, or here. And that's what they should have. I mean, there's a lot of people, I see people going to the bathroom on the, on the, the boardwalk, on the side of the building. It's not right. It's that time of year. People should have the right to do that. When I was younger, you know, in my eighteenth to my early twenties, I liked going to the City of Long Beach. We would always issue the key. And we said, we did a prime sweep of the bathrooms, and we locked them. I don't think it's a crime that we get these bathrooms keys and be able to lock it. I mean, we spent quite a bit of money developing these concession stands, and I'm still looking to spend more money developing the concession. That's one of the problems that we're having. So I think sunset's a fair time this time of year, April. People look in, get out of the house and use the boardwalk. Come home, you know, for a ride or for a walk, and do it. The next thing that I'm on to is the Pride of the Beach, which I love the Pride of the Beach. I look forward to it. I'm looking forward to the event. I hope it's a nice, beautiful weekend, and everyone makes money in the whole town for the City of Long Beach. But I need to get a liquor license. Does anybody have an answer? So we don't still know if there's a liquor license coming for them? Anyone? Okay. Well, at the end of the day, that, you know, we would deny a liquor license, and we would deny one. If they have the right to sell liquor on the beach that weekend because of VIP tents and everything else, you know, Rip Ties itself is right in front of us. We should be entitled to apply for a license in a nine, ten, three, eleven, the same as they are. We should have, you know, a three-day license just like they are. And that's all we're saying. It's not right that they would get it and we don't get it. That's all I really have to say. I mean, I could sit up here for hours, but please, that's it. I mean, hopefully, they will get some answers to. We look forward, my wife and myself are service in the town, you know. I really don't have to come up here to have problems about bathrooms and other stuff that's, you know, not here. This is simple stuff that can easily be avoided. I look forward to working hard and having a good relationship with the town. And I do. Well, thank you very much for your time, and have a good night.
Thanks, Brian. We're going to get back to you on these issues, okay? We are concerned. And again, we appreciate that you brought the funds to us here. But we will have to get back to you on the bathroom issues. As far as the liquor on the beaches, you voted, and that's it. We just...
You know, Mr. Smith, I'd like to make a quick comment. Bathroom is a relatively easy issue. It's, you know, this is a great problem to have, right? It's the winter. Technically, it's the winter season. The city's always had winter hours and summer hours. And now we have, you're doing what we've asked you to do, which is to try to be open and open in the spring. So we've asked Public Works to look to reschedule the employee who closes the bathroom, and they're going to be doing that, to reschedule later in the afternoon. The trick is, incidentally, is that the trick is, incidentally, as you may or may not know, that Public Works can, they're going to be... That means the bathroom will be open to that day, that time of day, every day, regardless of whether you're open or not. Again, that you're trying to open on days that are nice weather, right, and probably less so on days that are not.
Jack, I'm looking to stay open seven days a week. You have the only core project up and down that beach there where there's people working and people are going to be looking at it. At the end of the day, you know, I find I'm doing some instructions to fund the building hopefully at the end of the week to be closed and to keep that place open seven days a week. I was told by Nancy today, who's a lovely lady, who cleans it, that she's only allowed to stay open to six o'clock. Well, you know what? Six o'clock, I said, you're going forward at this time of year. We got to stay open to sunset, which is seven thirty, sir. And I think that is it. When you close the boardwalk at five o'clock at night, and you saw the crowd that was up there this Sunday, I know that you guys, beach people, someone could use the boardwalk quite often. At the end of the day, there's people that want to use those bathrooms, not just local taxpaying people, people coming from out of town. If you go to Jones Beach State Park, their bathroom's open. We have people who can't use the bathrooms here. They're running down, going to the bathroom on the side of the building. They're going into the boardwalk. There's all the people that need the bathroom. Jeez, I'm getting older myself, my friend. I need to use the bathroom. Okay?
Yeah, okay.
That's great. I know that Public Works, we work with you.
Great, thank you very much. Enjoy your night.
Thank you, Mr. Bradish. Our next person is Mr. Marcus Tinker.
I'll pass.
Okay. Okay, our next person is Monique Armstrong. Miss Monique Armstrong. Welcome. Just need you to state your name on the mic for the record. Welcome, Monique.
Good evening. My name is Monique, and I'm a former resident of Long Beach and currently a member of one of the local churches here in the North Park community. I am a very active member of my church, and I have a great relationship with many of our members and many residents within the community. I have heard a lot about the comprehensive plan that will be taking place here on Long Beach, particularly in the North Park community. Many of the residents I have spoken to have expressed concerns with the possibility, excuse me, of possibly being displaced with this upcoming development that, and that troubling. I have a grandma who owns a house here, and it would be her to hear that she was forced to sell her home because the city needed her property, or she had to sell because the city, she loved so much, had become so expensive to live in, that she has to sell her home for losing it, excuse me, before losing it. I have close friends who are worried about the apartment contracts that's being sold and then becoming displaced. If these things were to happen, what would happen to our churches and to the community? I would like to ask that you strongly consider these things before moving forward with this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Monique. We will be addressing these issues very shortly. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Monique, for coming out tonight. And I just wanted to publicly congratulate you for being accepted to Tuskegee University. I'm very excited. Thank you for coming out tonight and speaking. It's very important, as a young person, that you be a voice to things that concern you. So congratulations again. So congratulations again.
Okay. Okay, our next person is Mr. Mark Evangelista. I think I mispronounced your name.
Evangelista.
Evangelista. Welcome, sir.
Hi, Mark Evangelista, resident of Long Beach and proprietor of Overlook at the Beach. I was gonna address the council regarding the construction, however, I noticed that you guys are having a separate meeting on April 20th. However, I just wanted to state that, I only found out about this two days, three days ago from an email from the city engineer, and I just think that it would have been fair to consider the businesses that are gonna be affected by the construction, especially since they're closing the beaches in front of my restaurant, which is now gonna be a huge eyesore, with equipment gonna be stored there, construction rubble, and, I mean, I'm gonna lose all my business from the weekends because you guys are gonna close the beaches for the weekends. You're not gonna have concerts on Wednesday, no movie nights on Saturday. It's, you know, we survived Sandy, we rebuilt, we came back, we stuck with Long Beach, and we opened up for two more years, and now this is coming in our third year back. It's cutting our legs off. I mean, we're a seasonal business run by my family, and it's, I know, I'm all for the progress to be getting done. It has to get done, but I think that at least we should have been considered in the process and, you know, at least give us a discussion. You know, I'm getting mixed signals from everybody I call. I call Senator Kaminsky's office, he says it's on the, it's on the city, it's not on him, it's on this guy, that guy. I just wanted to be included in the process because now it's really gonna be detrimental for my business, especially since it's only a seasonal business. And, you know, I just feel like we got left out, and we support the city as well, we pay licensing fees, we give a service to the community by providing a space to enjoy good food and nice sights, and people come back, people come from all over just to come into our restaurant. And now I think it's, it's gonna be a shame because the possibility is that I might not be able to open this year, due to all the business that I'm gonna lose. And how can I plan for business? How can I plan for inventory? How can I plan for staffing when I don't know what's gonna happen? Is my end on the beach gonna be a ghost town? Nobody's coming out? I just felt it shouldn't be fair enough that we could have had a sit-down in a dress, you know, spoken to like we are, part of the community, as well as everybody else.
You're absolutely right, Mark. And I just wanted to bring your attention to the meeting on April the 20th, where there'll be a town hall meeting on that specifically, and it'll be run by the Army Corps of Engineers. I think that this is the opportunity that we might have to be able to have the input that we need. Part of that, we knew when we voted on this that eventually, this is a difficult thing for us to get through. It's a very needed thing that we need to do, and I know it's difficult on everyone, but I can only tell you that the town hall meeting on the 20th is an important meeting for us for what it's meant.
Okay, I appreciate your time, and just wanted you guys to consider that, you know, it does affect our personal family lives. We are doing everything we can to try and mitigate it affecting the whole community, and I'm sorry that your business is gonna be right in front of that spot, but the one thing that you did say, which I think isn't correct, is they won't be working on the weekends. Is that correct?
Right after Memorial Day.
After Memorial Day. So for the summertime, they won't be working on the weekend right there. Will they open the beach, that, that area for the weekends at least, or will they do something, maybe bring a concert there just to get people over to the area? I think maybe for safety reasons, they wouldn't be able to, but...
Commissioner, if you could shed some light on it, maybe?
Sure. Just a couple things. As far as the late notice, we got no line back.
You have to use the microphone.
Welcome, Commissioner. I'm glad you're here.
Thank you. We got notice back in November that the schedule for this project was changing. And again, just as a reminder to everybody, this is a New York State DEC project, or actually Army Corps of Engineering project that's under contract to the New York State DEC, and they really have full control over this. We got back, when they originally presented to the community back in June of 2016, they, we were told, or the residents were told, the businesses, that this project would not begin till August of this year. What happened is they moved this project up, they made great progress in the town Hampstead, they have an issue with the pipe and clovers, so now they're moving to Long Beach, and we were notified in November that they would move in April. Soon as, and that was my first week here, as soon as we were notified by that, we sent off a letter to the Army Corps and to the New York State DEC saying that the schedule they're proposing is completely unacceptable as an interruption to the beach. And that was also based on the order of the way they were doing things. Along with the council's support with Senator Kaminsky and Senator Woman Villa and Legislature Ford, there are multiple meetings with, with the Army Corps trying to limit the areas that they work in. Unfortunately, there's only three access points that they're contracted with the size of equipment to get to the beach, and they need to work on one west, or on the west side, one of the east sides to actually do that. There's been numerous articles in the Herald, in the Newsday, we've been on Files News, we've been on Channel 12 News, we've even been on CBS doing this. We finally got notice from the Army Corps that they were starting the next, you know, that next day, and that's why you got the late notice from me. We, I said, we have to put something together with these people that live right in the vicinity, have businesses right in the vicinity of these two access points, that this thing is starting tomorrow. And that's how quickly we found out when they finally finalized the schedule. So we're doing everything we can, the council's been very supportive of our actions in trying to limit the areas that they work on. A couple of things, more to your point, and the work should be done by 2:00, 2:30 from Monday to Friday, and there will be no work on the weekends once, once late, once Memorial Day comes. In addition, I'm presently working with the chamber groups, with the civic groups that do the movie nights, to pick locations that'll be safe to do the movie nights on, and while I'm not involved in the concert part of it, I'm sure Paul Ferenti will be looking for that, and they will still try to spread the movie nights out so that we can get fairly close to you, because they're only gonna be in a small area of actual work, so there may not be a reason not to do the movie night by, by your establishment. I don't know if there's anything else that I can tell you on that, but that's where we're at.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Evangelista. We appreciate your comments and your concerns. Okay, and again, we hope that folks can come out to the meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers on the, on April 20th. Our next person that we have is Gina Bradish. Ms. Gina Bradish, are you here? Yes. How are you? Welcome.
Gina Bradish, 740 West Bay Drive. So I'm here to speak about two things this evening. Number one, I've sent you all emails, I hope you've received them, in regards to the fire marshal receipts from last year. As we know, the bathrooms were not up to the Nassau County Fire Marshal Code, and we had to pay for that out of our own pockets. We were told last year that the, by the former DPW, that that money, that money would be refunded to us. And unfortunately, we're working with Corporation Council, but they said that due to budget, that it cannot be refunded to us this year, and that only portions of it can be refunded us, to us next year, hopefully. So that's my first concern. It's us and the students who pay for this, and it's just, you know, we just need to know if it's gonna be refunded, when it's gonna be refunded, because we weren't told it would be. My second matter is, I'm speaking on regards of beachside services, which is the mobile vending of ice cream and non-alcoholic beverages on the beaches and boardwalks. We are in full support of the Army Corps project and know that Long Beach truly needs it, but our mobile business will be tremendously affected this year. I met with Greg from Corporation Council, and he told me that it feels that it wouldn't be. So I decided to go down to the beach this afternoon and actually measure myself so I can show all of you how dramatic these results will be. So on Lafayette Beach, which is the same beach size as the boardwalk beaches running east to west, there's a 20-foot, there's 20 feet from the boardwalk going south to the snow fencing that is completely unvendable and blocked, therefore, no one can use it. Then there's a 41-foot, 41 feet of snow fencing that we use for a safety lane. That's totaling 61 feet in beach area that's no longer vendable or usable to any patrons on these beaches. The distance from the snow fence to the high tide mark is 65 feet. Therefore, the beaches along the boardwalk are completely cut in half. Then we have the west end beaches and the east end beaches. I went to Pennsylvania. I measured 10 feet buffer off the ramp because it wouldn't be possible to do the 20 feet that they have at the boardwalk. Then we marked out the 41 feet for the safety road. The remaining beach for the west end beaches is 20 feet, 20 feet for patrons to use this summer. That means that the Army Corps is using 71.83% of the west end beaches. So you still have to take into consideration New York Avenue is closed, half of Grand will be closed, half of Pennsylvania will be closed. The same thing at Neptune for the staging, that you have the beaches that are gonna be worked on with the jetties. So my question to all of you is, because I do have contracts with the city, why should I have to pay full for when I'm only using a percentage of the beaches? And this is our livelihood. I'm supportive of everything, but I just need some help.
All right, with respect to the first point, Gina, you know, you've heard at the City position with respect to your request for a refund, and my advice to you is, is do not negotiate that point in public because it would do no good for the city to publicly state its position on that topic. But I do encourage you to keep coming back and working through these issues with my office, as you have been, and you were very good yesterday. I'd also encourage you to agree on the materials that we've discussed and that we're still ready to receive. All right? As far as those other metrics you just mentioned, I'm not in a position right now, because, you know, I haven't had the opportunity to research that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be getting back to you. Thank you so much. Okay, and with that, we have Roshan Cruz Jr., if Roshan is here. Roshan, welcome. It was good to see young folks come and share all that. Welcome.
Just need you to state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Roshan Cruz Jr., 360 St. Street, resident of Long Beach. As a 12-year-old kid raised here in Long Beach, I know the what, the who, when, and the where. I know how things roll here. The last time I was here, I defended the MLK Center of it being torn down, but today it's different. I'm not only supporting MLK, but I am also supporting my black community. Black, my black community is a united community where we never let nothing come in our way, just like we don't want you to come tearing our community down, our community down. You've run some of our family and friends out of Long Beach, and you're still trying to run us down, us black folks. This is not how it is supposed to be. You say you love the city, and you say you love its people. Show that you do. If you really do, why are you destroying our community? Love, Lord above knows I care for my people. Lord above knows that I care for my community. It is also hurtful to see my people and my community being broken up. You took so many homes just to build big businesses here. Are we next? That's the question I ask. If someone were to come and destroy your home, you would be mad. So let us be, we all are family like two, we are family to one another. The community is our home, just like you have your own home. Long Beach is our home. We, and we have come too far just to back down.
Thank you, Roshan.
Beautiful, beautifully stated. I see that you wrote everything down on your paper. It was really beautiful, Roshan, and I'm so proud of you as a 12-year-old coming to the meeting to talk about your community and to take a stand because you are really the future of the community. And so I'm just very, very proud of you, and we'll do all that we can to protect you and your family and the community.
Thank you. I'm gonna thank everyone for coming out tonight, and this brings our city council meeting and the good welfare portion to an end. Get home safely. Good night.